Do I have? Do I have someone to approve the agenda?
I'll approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Commissioner Muzin?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knopf?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes.
And are there any amendments to the minutes? The only thing I have is, I'm vice chairman on this.
Are you again?
Well, only the first one. After that, I was chairman, but I was vice chairman in the beginning. But I didn't see any other changes, but does anybody else have any amendments to make?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move.
I second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knopf?
Yes.
Commissioner Muzin?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. Okay, this is a quasi judicial hearing regarding public hearing and consideration of CU-19-01, request by Lois Moore for a conditional use permit. The applicant, Lois Moore, requests a conditional use permit to operate a bed and breakfast at 547 Antler Road. The property is owned by Lois Moore and described on map 51020 CB tax lot 403, and is located in the residential medium density zone. The request will be reviewed against Municipal Code Section 17 dot 80 dot 0 dot 110, conditional use, overall use standards in Municipal Code Section 17 dot 14 dot 030, conditional use permit. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the design review board to hear this matter at this time? Does any one member believe she or he or she has a conflict of interest or a personal bias? Has any commissioner made a site review or had an expertise contact?
Site visit.
Site visit.
Site visit.
Site visit.
Site visit.
Okay, staff report.
Have King property owner Lois Moore request a conditional use permit for bed and breakfast unit in the lower level of the duplex? Property is located off Antler Road, as shown in the area photograph and in the staff report. The existing dwelling is a duplex unit with a unit above and below. The applicant proposes to live in the upper unit while renting the lower unit as a bed and breakfast unit. Property is in, this is residential in medium density R2 district. And the chair's already told you what the applicable criteria are for your review. The subject property consists of about 117 acres, about 7,400, so it's a good sized lot. And the standards state that only two rooms should be guest rooms in the bed and breakfast ordinance. The county records show five total bedrooms for the house. It doesn't break the bedrooms down into which units or under which the duplex unit. The applicant has stated that they intend to design the upper unit while renting the lower unit. Staff would ask if any approval granted would be conditioned to form the approval of the rental unit moving all the short term rental inspection requirements, including parking. There's been no evidence of signage to the criteria. So, the other things that I've found in the staff report are, you know, the parking concern, but it looks like some of it from the diagram shown and from the property, it looks like there's ample parking. I mentioned that the applicant states that there's substantial demand for short term rentals in Cannon Beach, and that can be verified by over 200 operating short term rentals. Whether it's a demand for this certain site location, that's hard to judge, and I have no numbers or anything to back that up. But an additional rental unit in Cannon Beach, for that matter, even if the location isn't likely to add too much of an additional burden on surrounding properties or on city services. Much can be mitigated through the proper operations, and with an owner operator living in the unit above, the oversight of the unit should be more than might be expected from even a traditional SPR. And so, my recommendation is for approval based on compliance with the conditions I stated with the short term rental inspection requirements, as long as they meet those. I don't see where this would be any larger impact on the neighborhood or the city services. Any questions?
There is no other correspondence.
When you say, "Compliance with the," you're saying that it should only have two bedrooms, right? Isn't that what it was required?
Well, it's, you know, that's what's said when the standards, but when we go in for, what I'm requiring is for the inspection, is for safe fire safety, all those other things that we look at through.
So you don't know if it's two bedrooms or three bedrooms?
I don't that unit, I don't.
Then why would you recommend approving it?
If it falls with the two bedrooms.
Oh, okay, that's what I was trying to get to.
Okay, any other questions?
On the first page of your staff report, there's an incomplete sentence that says, "And the dwelling has three," and then it doesn't say any.
No parking.
Parking, okay.
And that's not including garage.
Okay.
Okay. "The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff report and listed on the criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to those issues preclude the appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, and evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such a request by continuing the public hearing and leaving the record open for additional testimony, argument, and evidence. Persons that are going to testify, please be recognized by the chair, give your full name and mailing address, and if you are representing, or if you are appearing as a representative capacity, identify who you represent." Is there a presentation by the applicant?
I'm not a very formal person, so I don't have a real formal presentation.
Okay.
I've just purchased this home.
Your name and address?
Lois Moore, 547 Antler Road, Cannon Beach. And I purchased this home to retire to, and I do plan to live upstairs. Let me clarify about the bedroom question. There are three legal bedrooms in the rental space and three full baths. One of those rooms easily can be converted to a living room bonus kind of area. I have no problem doing that.
Those three bedrooms and bathrooms are on the first floor?
Yes, they are. It's about 1,400 square feet, so they're not small. I'm hoping to appeal to families that might have a hard time finding accommodations for, you know, five or six people who want to either share space as couples or bring extra children. I plan to have some extra amenities for them, cruising bikes so they can visit places in town, and full kitchen for cooking their own meals, so it'll be a little more affordable for them, which is why I stated that I felt there was some demand for this, because when I bring my grandchildren to Cannon Beach, you know, it's difficult for a couple of adults and four children to find accommodations, and then expensive to also go out and eat every time. So, I'm kind of wanting to keep it reasonable and affordable for families. There is ample parking, and that third bedroom, it would be nice if I could have a variance for three bedrooms, but if you find that that's impossible, I would certainly understand. It could certainly be additional sleeping space, whether it's an official bedroom or not. A lot of houses have additional sleeping space in areas that aren't officially defined as bedrooms, but I will defer to the council and certainly abide by whatever standards you want to set.
So, I mean, you're listing this as a bed and breakfast, but you're saying that they have their own kitchen to work with?
They do have their own kitchen to work with, and I would certainly do a continental breakfast. I probably would not be serving a full breakfast. A lot of bed and breakfasts do not serve full breakfasts. And then there are all the other meals to consider as well.
You will be present at the same time you have guests in the house?
Yes, yes. Unless I happen to be traveling, in which case I will have someone else come in and oversee things, but that is my intent, yes, sir.
And would you rent by the room, or would you rent by the suite?
By the entire space. I'm not going to do the room thing, no. My background, by the way, is property management. I've been in residential property management in the Portland area for almost 30 years.
And this is going to seem like a repetitive question, but I think it's important for the code. You are going to become a full-time resident of Cannon Beach and reside at this address?
Yes, sir.
So, I was wondering, on this drawing here, the driveway that comes up on the north side of the house, is that a shared driveway with the other house?
Yes, it's shared with the Kings.
I see, so that's a right away for both.
Correct.
And so they can park at the top of that as well as you?
Yes.
But it is parallel parking there?
No, not really. The driveway widens out at the top, and they usually pull in facing their deck space, and I pull in straight ahead beyond, right to the far back of my structure, so that they have plenty of room to back out and turn around.
So, in the garage unit on the first floor, that's a four garage, four car unit?
It's a two car garage and two spaces outside of the garage. It's about, it's almost three cars wide outside of the garage.
So, yeah, I guess what I was wondering about is being able to turn around and go down, because backing down that seems like it would be something.
I just backed down the entire driveway getting here tonight, so it's a straight shot, and I backed out of the one from the garage several times. You kind of get the lay of the land, and it's not difficult.
Is the house next to you a full-time resident?
No.
Okay, is there any other questions?
I guess I'm just curious, I don't under, I guess I'm not understanding what makes this a bed and breakfast.
The fact that she lives over there.
That's, that's it?
Yeah.
Just the fact that you're there makes it?
Correct.
That you live on the top floor, but you don't live on the bottom floor at all?
There are two floors. They're set up with two entirely separate utilities. All of the, there are two furnaces, two water heaters, two electric meters, two gas, I mean, everything is separate, so it is very much like a duplex.
Except, yeah, except up and down.
Except I have the upper level, and this is the lower level.
Again, this may seem a little repetitive, but I just want to make sure we're being really clear. I was supposed to say, I think of the code. In your application, you have your current address in Lake Oswego, and you say after closing, it's such a mailing address, but I assume you meant your new physical address, 547 Antler. Have you, have you closed on the house? Do you own the house?
Yes, February 28.
February 28, okay.
Yes. I've been sorting and schlepping for about three and a half weeks.
That's a lot of fun.
I lived in the same house for almost 30 years, you know, you acquire quite a bit.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you. Are there any other presentations by proponents? Are there any presentations by opponents?
I'm Jan Seibert-Wormen, P.O., Box 778, Cannon Beach. I'm not necessarily opposed to this. I just wanted to clarify, so does the B and B, would the B and B be a 14-day rental? What would it be?
It'd be unlimited, as far as I.
It would be what?
Unlimited.
As far as that, there's nothing in the code that would.
So you could have different people there every day?
Yeah.
And why is that?
A key difference is you have, you have an owner present at the property, which has a higher, presumably has a higher standard of oversight than if you don't. I assume that's the intention of the zoning code, it's how I interpret it anyway.
Okay.
Okay, any other presentations? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing portion of this. Is there any staff response?
I just reiterate just what Commissioner Kerr brought up, that, you know, we wouldn't rent this, or we would require you to make that third bedroom there to just a living area.
Yeah, I mean, I would feel more comfortable with that, because.
I mean, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess you have the ability to apply a variance, but that's.
Well, I haven't heard any reason for a variance. I mean, you don't just hand them out, there has to be a reason, you know, compelling reason to give someone a variance. There has been every other town that's given one. I still, I haven't heard anything that would be compelling.
Is this a variance?
No.
No, it's not a variance.
It's not a variance.
No.
To have three bedrooms would be a variance.
And they're saying that you could run through the existing.
Right.
Yeah.
I guess, I, you know, this is, it doesn't strike me as a B and B. I mean, at least my understanding of what a bed and breakfast is, the part that is a bed and breakfast is the fact that the person lives there upstairs, but there it ends. It seems to be a duplex in a bed and breakfast clothing, or a short-term rental in bed and breakfast clothing. I don't see, I mean, unless, you know, I understand what the ordinance says, so maybe the ordinance needs to be tweaked, because that's, just renting out the bottom of your house doesn't make it a bed and breakfast.
Unless, unless we have a question for you there, we've closed the public testimony.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Lisa, I have the same concern. The questions I asked tonight were around making sure that an owner was present, and I think that's one of the key tests for me. If we're going to allow, and I think you're right, it is an area that could be manipulated in the code, but hearing that the applicant's going to be on-site gives me greater assurance that we won't pass some of the issues that we've had with some of the other short-term rental issues that we're talking about.
No, but you could have, you know, crowds of people coming in. I mean, other short-term rentals, they're confined to twice a month or every 14 days, whatever ends up being the case, and in this one, it's unlimited. So I just, and it's not like there's interaction, you know, like, in most bed and breakfast, you're a guest in someone's home. This is, has separate water meters, separate electricity, separate heating. It's not a bed and breakfast.
Well, I thought about that as well. If there wasn't, as the applicant suggested, there wasn't a breakfast, I would not have thought good about it. Even in the application, I was confused, as it said, I plan to rent it as an Airbnb. Well, in my mind, that's different than a bed and breakfast, but she said she's going to be offering a continental breakfast, so there is that interaction. And I think one, for me anyway, and I thought about this hard, because at first I thought this is a dodge around the code, but I'm not feeling that way now. And part of that just has to do with kind of a reasonableness check, and I feel like if you have an owner on-site, they're not going to want to want too many people in there. They're not going to let people party, and they're probably going to burn out if they have just a non-stop group of people coming through. It's not a guarantee to this committee or to our community in any way, but I think having the owner on-site really gives me a lot more assurance, and the continental breakfast, there's interaction.
Seems like an ideal situation for a long-term rent.
It absolutely opens that up, and I think there's a bigger question here for us on that, in terms of the affordability question, but we don't have any general addresses in that code right now.
I know.
I just wanted to weigh in that, yes, 1704065 defines what a bed and breakfast is. The standards in 1774-10, and I agree with both of you that, and I'll talk about it in our priority session coming up, that this is one of the areas we need to address. But I honestly don't think it's something that we can address with this application if they meet these standards. I think we need to condition certain things, but we can't step beyond the boundary to say that it's not a bed and breakfast if it's defined here and it meets that, is what I'm trying to say. But I do want us to correct this. I agree with you.
So what kind of monetary enforcement is there with a bed and breakfast, in terms of making sure the owner really is?
We can't, we just like with any of our transient, our short terms, or any of the other, we have the ability to inspect, and we also have the ability with audits and other to oversight. And it is definitely something I want a better definition, better work in very near future, is what I'd like us to do.
Yeah, I mean, you have to have the business license, you have to have the health department to inspect, that needs to be there. Yeah, I mean, I think what bothers me the most is the fact that you're in a residential area and you can actually rent that place out every day. You know, that's, that's the thing that kind of bothers me.
And I, you know, I've stayed in bed and breakfast quite a bit. You're welcomed into the home to share the home with someone. This is not that situation. This is a separate apartment.
What's the, what's the city's history with bed and breakfast? How are these approved? Do we have any kind of data here, do we have to talk about where the bed and breakfasts are and how they're approved?
I don't have.
What are there?
There's not many, I can tell you that.
There's four total.
I have three of them. But we don't see them very often, at least when I'm a back end history of what.
Was the house marketed as a duplex? Does anybody know, or is it actually one property with two levels at the same time? Do you know that?
I think it is a duplex.
It's a, it's a legal duplex?
Yeah.
Well, does anybody want to make a motion?
It's not appropriate to ask her why she would not consider it a long-term rental?
What's that?
A long-term rental rather than a bed and breakfast, to address some of our housing issues. That probably isn't appropriate.
I mean, the application is for.
I know, I know. I thought it was worth asking. I'm curious.
Well, I think it's the issue we all know, with just so much on the move there.
Well, it also allows her to have her own family come and visit and take those nights out and provide for your relatives and friends.
Yeah, and until we do something about our ordinance, we really.
So, this technically doesn't qualify. It could. Could if we made some changes in the floor plan that you were suggesting, taking it from three to two, did I hear that right?
Yeah.
Are there, if two bedrooms is the limit for a bed and breakfast, what is the limit on people? How many persons?
It's not in the code.
It's not in the code. So what that means is that the living room could have a fold-out couch, or two fold-out couches, and you could jam another four people in there.
Well, no, I don't believe so. I think we can hold them to two bedrooms, you know, that's what we, that's what we want.
But what I heard her say is people could sleep in the living room.
I can't stop someone if any of our short term rentals can do that.
I know.
Exactly what you're saying. These are my issues with a lot of our code, that we don't have provisions that are better. But we can't, you know, I think the picking and choosing, if we had our city attorney who's in Mexico, right?
Call him up.
He would caution us against that. That's just what I worry about here, is that I don't feel we can put more restrictive than we do with anyone else.
But don't short-term rentals have, they have a number of people requirement?
There's an occupancy.
Yes.
Yes, but, you know, it's.
Per bedroom.
It's the same thing, it's the same thing. We can't stop them from not having more couches or whatever, we can only say, when you go out and put it posted, your occupancy is set at that limit.
Oh, and so they can go over the limit with no repercussions, is that?
Well, it's, you know, how do we, it's a very tough thing, especially before we had a code enforcement official, to marshal. We could not marshal that.
Now, we do have a code enforcement official.
We do, but I still don't know if we have the ability within our code to really keep restraints on that. But it's something that I do want us to do in the future. We just can't do it now, is what I'm saying.
Well, surely the property management companies that are managing would make sure that there was, they weren't.
I hope they do, and that's why we want a good relationship with them. They do want to work with us, and I think that's what we want to do moving forward, is every change we make, we will make with them, and so we want them to be a part of any of these changes. But I don't want to start picking and choosing, you know, right now. I think we need to make a good ordinance change for everyone, not just the property management, the public has some input.
Jeff, if the applicant came back to us, made the revisions we talked about to the ground floor, is there anything this body could do to stop that from becoming a bed and breakfast?
You know, you can, but the city attorney would not, I don't think, think that's a good, good option, right?
Would, put another way, would they need to come to us for a conditional use application? They could just go and get a business license if that floor plan complied?
Oh, no, they still have to do this, what we're doing right now, yes.
Conditional use application?
Yeah, that's what we're doing now. It's the same thing, and that's why I said, that, the only reason I hadn't gone and done the inspection on the property yet, to make sure that they, we had to, but, you know, I think that that's the one difference.
So all bed and breakfasts that are approved will come through this process?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm going to make a motion not to approve it until it meets the criteria of the bed and breakfast ordinance that we currently have.
I'll second that.
Can I ask for a clarification?
Yeah.
And that condition is around the second, the bedroom?
Yes.
Well, what if we took a, oh, okay.
I don't think we should approve it until it's at least complied. I don't think we should approve it until it's at least complied. I think our ordinance is weak and it doesn't make any sense as far as bed and breakfasts are concerned. However, it is the ordinance we have. So at least I would like to see compliance with the ordinance before an application that reflects two bedrooms before we approve it.
How do we know that, what's the difference between a bedroom and a living room? One has a bed and one has a couch.
Well, the applicant said that there were three bedrooms on the floor.
Yeah.
So that means that that has to be converted to something else.
Well, you can't completely stop it, but furniture has something to do with it.
But I would suggest that before we allow anyone to do what they do, we go and inspect it. So this is, you know, twelve items we have to inspect. And in that inspection, we often with even a short-term rental will say, you know, you have to do these three things before we can give you the permit. So, you know, to deny them or make them wait another month, if they go and do that this week and I can go and inspect with a building official and they've already done that, we've got to do that anyhow, you know what I'm saying? It just doesn't make sense to staff that you're making wait another month when they don't necessarily need to. They're going to do that and we can go approve that then. If they don't, they're going to have to wait. They're not going to get approved.
Well, the way I'm built is you don't approve something until it's in compliance with the regulation. I'm sorry. I mean, I'm not saying I don't, I'm not saying I don't trust the building department. I'm saying that's how I think it should be done and I'm going to stick with that.
We approve a lot of things though on conditional, conditional. And this is what we do.
I don't think we've ever handed out a variance or a conditional use permit when at the time it wasn't in compliance waiting for it to be. I can't imagine, I don't have any recollection of doing that.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Why don't we have a roll call?
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Mr. Kirk?
Yes.
Mr. Knopf?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion fails for now?
Pass.
Or I mean, I mean, pass. Okay. Next, we have a legislative public hearing regarding the consideration of Z O nineteen dash O one, Short Term Rental Ordinance Amendments to City of Cannon Beach Request for Zoning Ordinance Tax Amendments, Revision of Municipal Code Chapter seventeen dot seven seven, Short Term Rentals. The City of Cannon Beach is requesting zoning ordinance, tax amendments, revision of municipal code chapter seventeen dot seven seven, short-term rentals. The proposed amendments address a short-term rental permit administration enforcement and standards. The request will be reviewed against the criteria of the municipal code section seventeen dot eight six dot oh seven oh A. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Staff report?
This is a continuation and it's mainly three things. Or no more five-year permits and end the five-year permit program by allowing current five-year permits to expire. Number two, change the restriction that allows one occupancy group for fourteen days, called the fourteen-day rule, to instead allow two occupancy groups per month. And number three, if the owner's option, allow self-managed short-term rental units to the short terminal needs by changing to professional management. Staff has also included some updated data. And this data is going to be growing and getting stronger with each market we collect data. And hopefully by the time it gets to the city council, we'll have a pretty good understanding of what we're looking at. I've given you the numbers for that fourteen-day rental per quarter as it was asked, if you know how many stays and nights are broken down by each quarter, and then that's by the yearly. We don't have it broken down to the quarter yet because we've just started collecting that five-year, the unnumbered lot of data, but we hopefully will have that by the time it gets to city council for that. But you can see, the numbers are probably two to three times more, more uses for those lifetime of return on the products. And procedural requirements, this will of course, like I said at the last hearing, this will go to, from your recommendation, will then go to the city council for their hearings and then all of that will be forwarded to them at your recommendation. And so, any other questions?
Did you see my email on Senate Bill six?
I did. Yeah. So there is a Senate bill, we'll talk about it a little bit later and some of the other stuff that we're doing, talking about priorities, but there is a Senate bill before the legislature talking about getting rid of short-term rentals, how much legs that have. I don't know. From what I hear from my feedback from my planning legislative working group is that they don't see going too far. But I will talk, we'll bring it up in the next business. But Commissioner Newton asked if we should even be considering this with that legislation. Yes, I can tell you from a local perspective, you should always do what you want to do because states often do things and local often override those or make it more restrictive. We do what we do and until the state tells us not to do it, then we keep doing it. I mean, that's, I've worked in jurisdictions where, for example, the Wetlands or the, we had a buffer for the ocean in Georgia, two different issues. The state pulled it depending on who was in the state legislature. One of them they brought back, the other one they didn't bring back, but we had more strict standards anyhow and we kept them and threw out. I recommend that that's what you always do. My recommendation is you careful with local legislation until you get your case draw or some attorney telling you not to or the state legislature telling you not to.
Okay. You know, I was just listening to you. You said we were trying to be efficient here and I'd hate to go around on this a bunch.
So there was additional correspondence. Did everyone get a chance to read that? Okay. The pertinent criteria to be considered and noted in the staff report enlisted in the criteria sheet in the West Door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria on comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testified believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue recludes the appeal based on that issue. Persons wishing to testify, please give your full name and mailing address and if you are representative, identify who you represent. So we're going to be opening testimony here. I want you to know that if you have testified in the past and if you have sent a letter, we have read that. Please do not come forward and read your letters. And also, the testimony tonight that's going to be open is going to be limited to three minutes. So if there's anybody that would like to come forward and speak, please do so.
My name's John Beeler and my mailing address is P.O. Box thirteen ten, Cannon Beach. I live at thirty-six seventy-nine South Hemlock Street. I've lived in three different locations in Cannon Beach since two thousand nine and have owned property here since two thousand six. I've never lived where short-term rental properties could not be easily seen, within two or three hundred feet at the most. Never have I witnessed evidence of problems related to the guests of short-term rental properties or the management of them. That's only been ten years. It appears that recent significant changes in the planning department's oversight of short-term rental program have been implemented to address some problematic elements of that program. Further changes to the program may not be helpful and may serve to diminish the effectiveness of those changes. By that I mean the compliance officer and the S T R helper software program. Often there are unexpected negative effects as a result of changes in longstanding programs. The diminishing of the short-term rental program will result in a significant loss of city revenue and income. The undesired effect will be of shrinking the number of guests who contribute or pay for their use of their time here in Cannon Beach, city services, while increasing the number of guests, those single-day guests, who do not contribute or pay for their use of city services. Please guard against improving it and making it worse at the same time. We live in a place of great natural beauty. Sharing that beauty is a rare opportunity. Being wise stewards of that great beauty is a significant responsibility for every one of us. I just wanted to say thank you for your careful use of that wisdom. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make a presentation?
Does it matter what slide I'm on?
No.
Okay, thanks.
As long as you're inside.
I'll go out there, I have a loud voice. My name is Lisa Fraser, P.O. Box five, Cannon Beach. In nineteen ninety-two, I returned to the home once owned by my grandparents for the summer. In fact, I'm still here for the summer of ninety-two. It was shortly after the short-term rental law had gone into effect and my then-boyfriend had been on the city council who took the bold action. At first I didn't agree. I thought, how can the city tell me what I can do with my house and my property? But as the long summer of ninety-two stretched on, I began to see how things had changed in the little town where I spent my childhood. No longer was one family renting a home, but two, possibly three families now occupied each house and everyone with a driver's license brought their own car. The house next to me is a short, excuse me. With the internet came the biggest problems we have seen. Anyone and everyone, it seems, has a business now of renting or loaning out their beach houses and they're right in the middle of my neighborhood and I don't like it. The house next to me is a short-term rental managed by Vacasa. I don't want to call out the address because I'm not trying to be personal here. I've had a few occasions to call Vacasa about this rental, but the local number takes you to a national number. I tried to call just two weeks ago and after a lot of searching, the agent at Vacasa gave me the number I had just called to reach them. No one is watching out for these homes. I have a few questions for the people who are renting their homes. Do you know how guests are treating your homes? Do you know how many cars they're parking on either side of the street? Do you know how many families are actually renting your house? Because if they're willing to skirt our laws, surely there is no hesitation to skirt your rules either. This needs to change. I've lived on the north end where a rental near my home almost always created a dangerous situation for kids on bikes due to the way they park their cars. I now live on the presidential streets where we have many rentals and loners. It's incredibly frustrating to be awakened in the night either by the slamming of car doors of new arrivals or the screeches of excited people who are at the beach. How would second homeowners like it if we took twelve of our closest friends, rented a house in southwest Portland and partied for four days? The shoe on the other foot certainly would not be tolerated. With the addition of so many short-term rentals, there is no long-term rentals available anymore either. My longtime employee is currently couch surfing this summer and all my hires will need to be short-term or part-time as there is no place for new people to live. By the way, my employee was booted.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay, my employee was booted so they could build a short-term rental and my foreclosed house was also scooped up to make into a short-term rental. I would like to see you guys change the laws to be more strict. If you'd like to know why there aren't more locals here tonight, it's spring break. A lot of my friends work today and they will be resting up for tomorrow. Anyway, I'd like to see it tightened up. One last thing, I do own a rental, but I rent long-term and Vacasa keeps sending me this, I can make a bunch more money if I'd rent it out as a short-term. Have you seen this? Would you like to keep it?
No, your time is up.
It's my exhibit.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Well, if you want to pass your.
Don't you get those?
No.
Oh, I get them all the time.
I've never gotten one.
Thank you.
So is Colleen Toomey here?
No.
No?
She's a board.
Okay, anybody else like to make a presentation?
Probably not an official presentation. This is my first opportunity to come to this and see what all goes on. Thanks for your hard work. I know it's tough. Drake Nicholson, have a cabin here and my mailing address is thirty-two forty-three Vista Verde Lane, Olympia, Washington. Again, thanks for all your hard work. When the lady talked about couch surfing, I'm wondering if that fits the code too. I mean, and some, I do feel that some of the restrictions that you, in, you know, being very conservative on the short-term makes it tough for a long-term folks too. It's by restricting it, less available for the short-term, you have to charge more. Other than that, he was, the, talking about requiring another professional management company or something like that. People, people are still going to come to the beach as they've all stated. It's a very beautiful place to come and enjoy. I would love to see the council zero in on the problem people versus lumping all the short-term rentals together. If this nice lady is having trouble with her neighbor, zero in on them. Don't zero in and spread yourselves out and zero in on the thousands of people because over the years, I've owned our cabin for twenty-seven years. I don't remember, I mean, and if the neighbor did have a problem in twenty-seven years, they would say something to me. And I'd rather do more of that versus trying to include everybody when there's a problem child. And again, whether they're renting or just coming to enjoy the beach, people are going to come to this beautiful place. They have to park somewhere and I'm sorry, it bothers some of the neighbors and things like that. That's tough and I do know that. But again, I'd rather see us concentrate and zero in on those folks that are having the problem that you get calls on and the complaints. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other presentations? Then we will close the public hearing and go move to discussion here. So one of the things I was curious about on this first mission that we have on no more five-year permits and ending the five-year permit issue, is that something that the city council has already agreed that they want? Because it's coming, I mean, it's sounding like they want us just to approve that. How did the discussion go?
I think they want your recommendation. You know, that's, that's how they, it's usually done is they'll, they come up with what they believe the main items they want them to do. No, they don't, they don't expect you to write back to them and say yes. That's not your purpose.
So how do the members feel about?
I go back to Joe's very first comment. I don't really see what the problem is. The system seems to be fairly well-balanced. I mean, if you look at the past histories, the trends, so I'm just not quite sure why we want to change. we want to change it.
I'd have to agree with Charles on that, and we also have seen no tracking as to financial, the financial effect on the city by limiting these and getting rid of the five-year rentals.
Well, I disagree with you completely. I do see a problem with the five-year rentals, because I live on a street where there are unlimited five-year rentals, and I think it's a mess. There's people in and out all the time. They tend, they don't, when you have that constant shift of people staying for such short periods of time over and over again, I think you tend to get less supervision. You have a lot more opportunity for people who are there to party and to carry on. I mean, I'm sorry, I just, I think the unlimited five-year rental is a terrible idea. As far as the other part of it, I thought the only reason that change was suggested, the two-week versus fourteen-day, was to try and make things easier on people. I had no idea that it was, that mattered so much. The only rationale I can see for it mattering so much is there's two times less per year if you do it twice monthly than if you do it every fourteen days because of the number of days in the year. And I can't imagine that it would be such a big deal over two times, two less rentals a year, but evidently it is. I don't actually have that strong a feeling about the fourteen-day versus the two-month rental. I do have a very strong feeling about the five-year unlimited. I think that's a terrible idea.
Yeah, I mean, I tend to agree with the fourteen-day, two-tenancy. It's like, it's a toss-up, so I'm not, I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other on that. But I do know, not on my street, but I do know that two streets down, I have friends that live there, and there's a rental there, and every summer, they complain and complain about people partying, noise, parking everywhere.
Yeah, it makes you want, I mean, it makes you want to go somewhere else for the summer, and that should, if you live here all the time, you shouldn't want to get out of town in the summer because you're just so sick of all the in and out, and in and out, and the parking, and pulling in, and leaving, and coming and going. I just, you know, I mean, it's, I guess it's hard for somebody who doesn't live near one of those to imagine what it's like, sort of the chaos that surrounds it. I think that it's very difficult if you live on a street where there isn't any unlimited five-year rentals. So, I mean, you know, I guess you can only speak from your personal experience on something like that, or the experience of somebody who is a friend of yours who's going through it, but everyone I've talked to who's near a five-year unlimited rental hates it. And I don't think you should be, in your own town, should be trying to find a way to get away for the summer somewhere else. I mean, I just think that's ludicrous. But as far as the fourteen versus two months, I mean, for the extra two rentals, I guess if that's that important.
So...
I thought it was just easier, but evidently not.
So, I, before we finish those topics, I think there might be a little more agreement with the last mission here, and that is at the owner's option, allowing self-management short-term rental units to defer penalties by changing to professional management. Do we all agree with that?
I do.
I do.
Yeah, I guess, I agree with that, too. It's just that I...
I don't think that's the root of our conversation.
No, but I mean, I want to get one of these times.
But I would like to say how disappointed I am in the property management people for their, I just, I guess I thought, I didn't think that, I get the feeling now, or the way I'm feeling now, is that the property management people, I thought that maybe their overall goal, and this is probably very idealistic and ridiculous of me, to think that maybe their goal is for the betterment of the whole community. And now, yeah, it is funny, and now I'm thinking that really, all it is is to get as much money as possible, and they're willing to sacrifice the good of the community for that. I'm disappointed. I'm not seeing what's funny.
Well, I mean, it's people's livelihood, so I think anything we do, we need to be ready to justify. And I think, I have never understood what the city wanted from us. I think there's some assumptions I could make about what the city's looking to do there, but I cannot, from what we're looking at, feel like I understand completely why we're talking about, the same thing you said, the fourteen-day, it doesn't mean much, but the five-year is a big deal.
Yeah.
They're going to lose a lot of money. So, they're probably going to fight for it, and are we ready to defend what we're going to come up with here? Can we defend, can we support it? Whether it's anecdotally, whatever, or not.
Well, I feel like we can, because I think that it's the livability of the city, it's the people who live here, you have to just balance the needs of the community that is here all the time with the needs of people who are trying to make money off of the fact that they own a house in this community. And I think, you know, that balance is a difficult balance, you know, and...
It's difficult as a tourist town that has a balance of...
Right, and we have a lot, we have a lot of short-term rentals, and the fourteen-day to whatever, two-week thing is in, it seems to be very healthy in this community. So, I'm not, I don't understand why we also need to have the unlimited five-year. I think that as many people as want to can go on that short-term rental program. There's not a limit in the number of homes. If everyone on your block wanted to rent out their home on a short, I can't, please don't talk while I'm talking. If everyone on your block wanted to rent out their home on a short-term rental basis for the two-week, for the fourteen-day, they can do it, and there's nothing to stop them from doing it. So, it's not like, you know, a lot of these letters puzzle me, because in the letters, people are saying, please don't stop us from renting out our homes. Please don't stop short-term rentals. No one's talking about shorting, stopping short-term rentals. Nobody is talking about that. There are lots of, the only thing is the fourteen-day or the two-week, and it doesn't seem like anybody on this, this commission anyway, has a real strong feeling one way or the other about that.
Most of the letters that I saw wanting to keep the fourteen-day.
Right, they do, yeah. And I actually don't care, you know, I mean, I guess it doesn't make that much difference whether you have your, rent out your home two more times a year or not, really, in the overall picture. So, I think, you know, I think balancing the needs of a community, and no one's trying to stop short-term rentals, and no one's stopping people from getting income so they can make their mortgage payments, or so they can make their bank loans, or so they can pay utilities, or any of, or property taxes. Anybody can rent out their, am I right? Is that true? Anyone can rent out their home as a short-term rental.
Well, yes.
As long as they meet code. So, what is this about? I mean, why are we getting letters saying, you're trying to stop our short-term rentals? You know, I don't understand that.
Well, it isn't true, and so they're wrong in stating that, I think. So, but can we, can we recommend, then, at least for starters here, that we all agree that the owner's option for if they get a penalty can...
We accept that recommendation.
Okay, that's true. Accept that one.
And accept the fourteen, or reject the changing the fourteen-day.
Okay, so, yeah.
It's, the only thing I'll say, the caveat to that, is it seemed like that was a compromise, albeit in a certain perspective, a small compromise, if you delete the fine. To move, I think you get a couple of days.
No, you actually get more, you get more on the old way and less...
On the new way.
On the new way. You get two less per year on the new way and two more per year on the old way.
I can't begin to, yeah, okay.
Okay, because, no, you do, I mean...
No, I'm not, I'm not saying you're wrong.
I'm arithmetic.
Except in the lead year.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, so the compromise is, what the council was asking for a recommendation was getting rid of the five-year unlimited, or the lottery, in other words, getting rid of the way it is now and decreasing the number of short-term rentals by two per year. Both of those things. And they're not saying they're doing it, they're just saying they wanted our feedback on it, that's all.
Right. Hi, Mrs. Sondis, so I'm looking at attachments, it's dated July tenth, and a number of things are listed, case two, possible amendments. And again, I was not on the council's time, so I don't know the backstory here, I'm confused on a lot of this. And part of that confusion is we're not talking about zone-based restrictions, density restrictions, geographic restrictions, cap on permits, we could talk about that a little bit, frequency and duration of restrictions, I guess we could talk about that.
You are talking about them.
We have talked about that. So, but there are some things that I think would help, and probably more important, that were not helping at all, and I just, I've always been a little confused on this process. And again, maybe it's just because I came in late to the show.
And so, these were the ones that I think, and I wasn't part of it either, but my predecessor gave to the council in the work session, as you know, possible, the things to look at, and then what you're, what you had before him, before you now, are the ones that they settled on for this edition. Not to say that when we have our priority work session following, but you guys made one another shot at this, so, but that's not, those aren't under this order, change any of these others.
Will you say what you just said one more time about the work, not the both of them, just a bit about the work session, another shot at it, what do you...
Yeah.
So, yeah, so this is just, this is an ordinance, a short-term rental ordinance for three major changes to the short-term rental ordinance, and that, this was given to you by the city council, as we'll talk about in the following work session, following the next work session. We're going to talk about your priorities for the coming year, to set your agenda, kind of your to-do list, and you can say, these short-term rental things were not things that we think are important. What we think are important are different things, like I think I'm hearing you say. So, we will, you could move that to your number-one priority, and we could have a work session in a month or two, if you wanted, and have new short-term rental ordinance on those things. So, you know, that's, this is not what these three things are asked for from the council, it's just one ordinance. There, you can have little ordinances or major changes, and let me be as frequent as you like, and that's what I'm trying to say. That came from them, but you guys are also assigned, just as they are, and we'll go over your, what your roles are in local government. You have this role to initiate ordinances and changes of your own, so...
But that's not what this is. This is just a recommendation to the city council, whether we agree, the idea of getting rid of the five-year lottery, whether we agree to changing fourteen-day to twice monthly, and whether we agree to, you know, not violating people if they join up with an agency. Just those three things.
Yeah.
One thing I have an issue with is these recommendations that the city council's asking us to address were done before we had a code enforcement officer and we had the software. And so, I'm not sure we have the data necessary to make the, to make changes.
Oh, I think we do, but, but I think that the important thing is that we do have an enforcement officer, and I think that's, that's the big change, is that people that are complaining about not being able to get through to the proper authorities, that's the person to get in touch with. So, I think that's a huge difference in what we had in the past.
And I will say on that note, that we will have, we have a, we have right now, a code complaint form, web-based, on our police page, and we'll have it from ours here, hopefully as soon as Rusty gets the minutes to it. But in the next week, we will have a code complaint form live on, live online, so anyone in the community, that is where we want you to go. We want you to, if you have a complaint about these things, that's where you go. Go fill out the form, and the code official will respond to you.
So, the other thing that I had mentioned in the past, and that is if they, of course, decide not to reissue five-year terms on rentals, I disagree with the idea that there should be a lottery if they, if they keep that in force, that there should be a lottery, because to me, that, you can be in the lottery for five years and never be picked, so I think there should be a better mechanism for figuring out who's, who's on that list and who's going to have that rental property. But obviously, if they drop that whole plan, then that's mute, but the lottery system doesn't seem to, I mean, that's not very fair, as far as I'm concerned, it's just the luck of the draw.
Can I say that that's also, when a planning commission makes a recommendation for new members of planning commission here, or any one that's been sitting here, yes, that's what staff appreciates in these recommendations, is you may deny it, or you may, but if you want to see certain things done better some way, that applies to these that we're looking at, mention that so that we can include that in the recommendation report.
So, we've wrapped this up?
Well, I'm...
We're all clear on this now?
I'm going to make a motion that at the owner's option, they should allow a self-managed short-term rental unit to defer penalties by changing to professional management, that we make the recommendation that the council, to the council, that we think that's a good idea.
Do we all agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, we do?
I would take, yeah, take each of the three.
Okay, okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Call the roll.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Knopf?
Yes.
Mr. Nissen?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Sheriff Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Can we, can we make a recommendation for the second one? Change the restriction that allows fourteen days to two, can our recommendation be who cares?
No, I think, I think we should either, I think we should state it that we want to leave it as-is.
As-is.
Well, I'm, I...
If who cares, but then the proponents, if the people want it...
Right.
That is not a big deal, one way or the other, because two, two times more a year is not going to love the community or make a difference in the livability of the community.
Well, so why don't you make the motion?
Okay, so I make the motion that changing the restriction that allows one occupancy group per fourteen days, the fourteen-day rule, to instead allow two occupancy groups per month, we don't, we do not recommend going forward with that. That is not a recommendation.
Second.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Just to be clear, that means we will not change it.
We don't recommend changing it. We're not changing it anyway, we're just recommending...
Right, yeah.
Mr. Knopf?
Yes.
Mr. Nissen?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Sheriff Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, now then.
And now, I...
Can I have a five-year?
And now, I'd like to make a recommendation that we, to the council, that they do get rid of the five-year unlimited permits lottery system. And I guess that's two separate issues. Get rid of the five-year permits, however, allow the permits currently in place to expire naturally.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Okay.
No, no, no seconds. Okay. So that means, are we going to recommend that they continue the five-year?
No, we have to have a vote on it, it has to be a motion.
We didn't give a second on that.
Right, so we have to have another motion.
Yep.
I move to continue the five-year permits for a limited time to allow our new procedures, the code enforcement officer and the software, to see if that's effective in remedying some of the issues, short-term runs. I'll second that.
Um, do you have any, do you have any feelings about the lottery system?
I play it regularly.
Well, do you win?
Regularly.
I'm still here.
No, but I mean, I, I have a strong feeling about not going with the lottery system.
What would you suggest an exception?
Well, I, I had suggested earlier that it was done by dates on when people applied for that. So, if they were to continue it, then it would be when they made the application, and that would be the next person that would be in line for that.
So it'd be very objective, just my things.
So, we have a motion?
We have a motion, and...
Second.
Yeah, a second, okay. Any other discussion there?
Um, timing, I guess we, I guess the council could come up with that, in terms of what is a reasonable time to review the data.
Well, I'd like to know financially, if they eliminate these, what it's going to do to the city's budget.
And is, would it be possible during that temporary period to stop new permits as we're in this evaluation period, new five-year permits?
That would make sense. You know, during the evaluation period, to not allow new ones.
Suspend.
Suspend, yeah.
Until we have some meaningful data to evaluate?
Including the financial...
Would you like to restate your motion?
Yeah.
Including what you just said?
Yeah.
You can take a minute if you want.
Could you read that?
So, not move to continue the five-year permits for a limited amount of time to allow for assessment of the code enforcement and software?
Yeah, so allow for the, an assessment by code, the code official and the SDR help with also...
Okay, with suspending new five-year permits?
With the length of...
The length of time it takes to...
I don't want to do five years.
Yeah, just, I would say, yeah, about two, up to a time period, you know.
Could I also include the financial aspect?
Yeah.
Okay. So two years and...
Two, two years?
For two years.
Or four two years.
For two years.
Okay, we have a second on that one? Yep. Any other discussion there? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Nathan?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
No.
Mr. Knopf?
Yes.
Sheriff Johnson?
No.
So, one last thing, as with any of these ordinances, I would hope to have a motion on agreement with the conference of plan and satisfy the land's uses of the city. That you have to be, uh, captured.
Okay. Um, okay, then that issue has come to a close, thank goodness. And do I get a motion for authorization for the chair to sign the appropriate orders?
So moved, yes.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Knopf?
Yes.
Mr. Nathan?
Yes.
Sheriff Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, now, the next item is a work session, which is closed to the public.
Well, it's not closed to the public.
Well, it's, you can't test it.
They're not interested.
So, I would like us all to move down to here, the park personnel, and so, we're going to have a work session down there, so I'll give you the projector, so, chair, if we could have five minutes to handle that.
Yeah, yeah, sure. We'll take a five-minute break.
We've got our limit count. Forty, and this is in the C1 zoning district, no mobile food vending wagons, okay? But that's about the only place you can find that. So if I wanted to pull a truck somewhere else in the city, does that stop me from doing that? So those are the kind of questions that drive me crazy, and I, I get very little sleep. But this, you notice this says no drive-in restaurant, drive-in facilities, but this is a walk-in, so is that allowed?
Yeah, a walk-in or a walk-up? I, I'm not...
It's a walk-up window, you know?
That's all I thought.
I want you to look at 1704, 420 outdoor merchandising, in the definition, what does it say? Including sales which are transacted through an open window. So you gotta dig through and find it, and that's in the definition section. 179150 outdoor merchandising says, all uses in the C1, C2, and RM motel district shall be conducted entirely within a completely enclosed building, except that the outdoor storage, and this is kind of the most, the heart of our outdoor merchandising, sell, display sale or rental merchandiser services may be permitted where the standards of sub-section D of this section are met. The following uses and activities subject to applicable conditions are exempt from this, and you'll see I've dotted, or dashed out down to 10, because that's the one that they said, we allow food trucks in the farmer's market, okay? So that's what I was directed to. And so here, though, here's that section it refers to back here in E4. So, E4 is the farmer's market segment, and so, as long as it doesn't interfere with pedestrian or vehicle traffic, unduly interferable operations with adjacent businesses conducted for a specific time, and limited to foods, specific food-related items and cut flowers, free distribution merchandise considered outdoor merchandised for him. So that's the next one up. So, but anyhow, you'll see that, that, under those, will allow it, okay? But you'll see right there, underneath there, it said by the city manager. So city manager has to sign off on it. So, you know, there's other events that came up as we were doing this and we were talking about this. Well, what about barbecues, or the fun runs that groups do, and they sell things, or they, you know, you buy a ticket to get in the event, or you have to pay to get into, does that count? What about weddings? Does, do weddings, if they're holding a wedding? Hey, what about the famous wedding with an open bar? Or you have to pay at the bar? So, our overall language, not real good with any of this. And so, you know, I can't tell you how many times I have to reread those ordinances and try to find something that, that works, and it doesn't often work. So it gets to kind of what we were talking about with our other ordinances tonight, with bed and breakfast. I've never worked with one that says bed and breakfast, and it gives you this, that, I mean, you could talk about a loophole. And so, prohibition on the outdoor store to display a merchandise in conjunction with commercial use applies to the general type of merchandise which is sold within the business premises, not just specific merchandise styles or brands. The outdoor store, display, sell, or rental outdoor area in which the merchandiser services stored, displayed, sold, or rented is accessible only through a building entrance, or the outdoor area screened from a public street or adjacent property in a manner approved by the DRB. Okay, so, what would this be?
Well, let's see, we can't see whether somebody has to go inside the restaurant before they can get to that outdoor area, or whether they...
So you think so?
I, I think that if, if, that would be compliant if they had to go inside in order to get to it, and I'm not sure that that would be a particularly...
So this one, I mean, if we have that in our town, I think...
The pizza place, they, they sell it through.
And we have, and the reason I point this out is because we have language in another section that allows outdoor tables, okay? But yet, that kind of comfort Dixie makes you go, well, why don't you have this other section specifically? So...
I said a question, so we have distinction between it being a sidewalk versus maybe tables that are part of the restaurant property more distinctly?
Yeah, you know, I think this...
Like your warehouse, for example, maybe.
Yeah, so I think this is trying to give to more of non-restaurant related, is what I think this is... So say I'm a hardware store or something like that, you've got to go in the building to get to those kind of screened areas that, you know, a home depot or something like that. So, you know, those are, these are the kind of issues, though, and these are some additional requirements, and so we'll talk a little bit about this later, but you know, for like newspaper vending, nonprofit, live music, there's additional requirements, whether a fun run, the one that's often brought up, you know, whether that, where you're paying into a charity and you're having a fun run, or even having like drinks, or, you know, some of these have a beer, or somebody from doing the actual promotion doing that. So, I just think that we have some language, and we, there's, we could do a lot better, or we could clarify some of the language that went down. And the reason I bring this up is because I've never been here for this, so I'm not really a good person.
That's what it looks like.
I noticed George's credit down there, so it's a great photo, I love this photo. And, but anyhow, when I see that, what I next see is what I just spent last week over and been at Oregon Prepared Conference, I see this, and that's what scares me, okay? So, we may see ourselves as a little village, but with 10,000 people on the beach, we're not a little village. And, and so, you know, this is Las Vegas, at the, I went to Oregon Prepared Conference on Emergency Management last week, and the guy that was the actual state's emergency manager from Vega, from Nevada, was talking about this and, you know, all of that. And so, you know, I think we, we need to be better prepared, and that starts with our ordinances and our procedures and our applications, and carries forward into how we handle events and organize events.
So why don't we just leave it to the city council?
And that's, that's been, so that's what I wanted to get at here, is so I've just got a few more slides, and then we're going to open it up and start talking about these things. But these are ones I just found, the one, you know, from, thanks Jill, she got them actually. And, and some of our big events, but, you know, when you Google, and I Google all the time, 10 best places, or what, you know, best place to go, where do they say? What's number one? Ganon Beach is number one. Look at all those assets. I mean, people would kill for those assets. And, and so, you know, I, I just think that we're not gonna, even if you wanted to shut the door and close the shop and not let anyone in, it's not going to happen, I'm just telling you, it's not going to happen. Not as long as Toropia keeps saying this is your number-one place to go. So currently, when we were talking about this, how, how do you get to these things, and like outdoor merchandising, the reason it's before the planning commission is because there, if you're going to make an amendment to the zoning code, which this is in, you've, it's got to go through them, okay? But, you know, I think the parks code, as you see down at the bottom, that's under the parks committee, and it plays with this, in how we handle events and other things, and merchandise. Food trucks, you know, currently not permitted, the fun runs, that falls actually, if you got that sheet that I sent you all, that falls under traffic and parking, which is actually under the police and city manager area. Events defaults to the city manager, and even the city permitted events application, do you all get that, or do you all...
No.
I didn't know if it was that kind of, okay. So, you know, that said, a permit is required for gatherings, we don't really have an ordinance that says it's required, so we say it in our application. So, that's the kind of thing I want us to kind of clear up with this, moving forward. And it's not like that there's not, oops, there's not great examples out there. Here's Sugar Land, Texas, I mean, I just really looked at a few different, oh, did it stop? Okay.
Sure. Did it hit enough?
I didn't check. Okay. 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 Uh, this is Sugarland, Texas, and I've, I've put a few links to different towns on there, and so, you know, I think it starts often with this, you know, how do you reach the public? The websites, this one has a great one, it gives them the ordinance where they can click on the ordinance, they can click on the event and the application, the policies and procedure, special events application there, but it also gives them the process and the timing, how long it might take them to get through this process, and then a contact person, and then how much they're going to pay. You know, there's plenty of these websites out there, another one that I directed you to were Four Columns Colorado, it even gives you kind of a definition of what is a special event, so what, what plays into our ordinance, and what doesn't play into our ordinances. Same thing with the details and the days and links of requirements, how much it's going to cost you. And, you know, some of these are larger towns, but some of them are very small, and I can put more out there for you guys to look at if you need to, as we go through this process. But, you know, I always recommend just Google or look at different places that's similar that you, that you enjoy, or other places, and see what they do, because I think that's always a great place to learn. The reason I also put Four Columns on there is because you see this approval, they will do even the application form and everything, is electronic and online, so that you can fill out that stuff and process it online, so that's, that's another nice feature for them. So... Okay. So, the ones that I can think of, the type of events off the top of my head, and what I've listed here on our events merchandising, little score sheet that we can work through, festivals, arts and craft shows, you'll see, some of these have different, you know, aspects. And so I, I made our little matrix here to think about, you know, where should these happen? Where should we allow them? You know, what, and with what, to what degree we should allow these things? You'll see there's different ones, like, like a block party where you have to block off streets, the food truck rally, a famous one, Beer Garden, you know, serving of alcohol off...
Did you get this, Mr.?
Did you all get this? Oh, 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 sorry, it's... Thank you, thanks.
We got to carry that.
Yeah. Yeah, so... Yeah, so this is, I just typed this up, I thought this is a way that we can move forward with at least a little kind of framework of moving forward with it. And, and so you'll see, as you go through that, I've, I've put them into parks, should these be allowed in streets from private property, should they allow merchandising, and then some notes to work on. Then next, I put kind of the issues that come up with events. From everything, from application and sound, down to health permitting, alcohol management, signs, course markings, vendor and licensing, and then the last section there is merchandising, and I took from really what is already in our ordinance, kind of what's permitted, and then who approves it, and then if there's any additional kind of requirements involved with those. And then I thought, as we move through these different events and issues, we might wanna add, you know, other merchandising categories we're gonna include in there. And so, that's how I kind of framed what we're gonna be talking about and discussing here, but I really think the, maybe the best way to start this off is for the Parks Committee to kind of share what they've tried, or what they're trying to accomplish with their new ordinance amendments, because I think you all did get the different languages on the Parks Code in your packets, and you might discuss it, because I think this is the existing, okay? And then when we, after you guys explain kind of what you're hoping to achieve with the new Parks Code changes, then we can start kind of moving through some of this stuff and open the floor on what you guys wanna, wanna see out of this, or if you wanna see this.
Have we been looking at this?
We are.
Can I quick it up?
Oh, you bet.
Look at this one.
Yeah.
Well, I think the Parks Committee, and thanks by the way for the invitation to come to our conference. We've been reviewing the Parks portion of the code, I think partly to clarify some language, partly to begin with the same, just finding places where ideas were unclear, where maybe when it was initially written, the intent was understood, but not stated quite as, as clearly as it might have been, and then other issues that have come up. So some of the things that we've been looking at that may have some overlap here, I think have to do with commercial activities, the kinds of gatherings in parks, kinds of structures that can be put up for events in parks, tables, handeballs, tents, or not, so that kind of discussion, and I don't, I don't think they're one in the same with the kind of considerations you're, you're in here, but there is some overlap, because when people want to gather, parks are one of the places they want to gather, and so certainly, and then for the larger events in town, I think there's probably considerable overlap.
Well, what you just said also about the merchandising and the structures, I know those are two big components. Also, I wanted to let you guys know, I want you to, all of you, if you get a little chance and go into our municipal code, this should actually give you kind of little work things, a little test, go in there, do a search, see if you can find any definition for temporary, okay?
Right.
Go. There isn't, there isn't, okay, yeah, you can't find, and so, yeah, there's a lot of kind of gaps in code, and Sped and Breakfast were just a perfect example of that, but a lot of these things, I think we need to kind of hone in on and put some detail to do this. Any other thoughts, or before we, you know, kind of talk about any things, you guys wanted to, that, you know, you've noticed as problems or issues, or things that you wanna see changed? Because I have not experienced a season of events or festivals or things here. Is the art dealer city parks used a lot for your events and festivals?
Just, I mean, you know, the, yeah, yeah. Music, you know, in downtown, but, you know, that's pretty common all the time, but I can't think of any other.
That's not very many hours a year, usually.
Yeah, yeah.
I know sometimes on Fourth of July, I know there are some other concerts in the summer, but not a lot.
Do they sell anything at those, no drinks or-
Bring your own.
What about, what about your gallery or art walks or anything? Do they sell wine at those?
They're not free, it's free. And once in a while, you have to buy a glass, I think, for the, for the wine walk, you have to buy a glass, and after you have chamber, and then you can get filled up with various places, but that, that's about the extent.
So you, is it like a bracelet type system, or have it-
Yeah, a bracelet and a glass.
Yeah.
But it's just tasty, not classy.
Right. You're not, you're still willing.
There's the occasional wedding at West Shirley.
Yeah, so wedding, and, and weddings, do they have receptions there, do they-
Well, I mean, weddings that have been down my way, my understanding was that they would get permits so they could dry down, set up tents and that sort of thing, but I don't think there's any, any additional enforcement on that.
But are you talking about on the beach?
On the beach.
Well, that's-
That's a different thing, yeah.
Yeah. And we, there is language in the Parks section of the code prohibiting any kind of commercial activity currently in the parks, in city parks, and we've added, opposing to add some language, except under authorized city manager approved events, so there may be situations where some of these things, you know, permitted events might be allowable, but there are gonna be parameters around that event that are dictated by the, the city manager.
Yeah.
So then, if somebody wants to go down and cut up wood, driftwood, is that through the city, or is that through the state?
State.
State.
Yeah, and so, are there any other events, you know, types of events that may not be on here that we should think about or consider?
Well, Earth Day, what's that?
Yeah, I would call that just a, it's a festival, but do you all have a, is there a parade component or anything?
There are in the street, yeah. And there are events for 12 days, so it's a, 12 days of Earth Day, various events around the city, but the public events, or the public facing events maybe are-
Nothing so that is given away.
Right, it's all, all non-collective.
Yeah, it's all free, donations for the shred.
So do you all, when you have your event like that, do you block off sections of town or streets, or how do you do this, parking rides, or-
U S Bank parking lot.
Well, now this year, yeah, we get to change.
I see.
Yeah.
Could change to what?
Second Street, yeah, our understanding is the street parade, the street-
Second Street's kind of a prison.
Yeah, for four hours.
A few hours.
Yeah.
And the parade is very short.
The bank doesn't like you?
Nope.
So-
Take all my money out there.
There is like a hay day, or haystack day or something like that?
Beer event, beer festival?
No, it's, they've had, they've had-
Few years, yeah.
But it's, that's on private park.
That's on private?
Yeah, it's on haystack gardens, across the street.
Yeah, so, yeah, any others of those that you know, that are large, private gatherings, or?
Um, more than fifty.
Yeah, exactly.
The, well, there are, again, this doesn't involve selling anything, but historically, in my experience, who doesn't go back that far, the city has held potluck dinners at the community hall, which ran at least in the direction of 75 people or so, and there's a return to the salmon dinner once a year, definitely gets it out.
But again, those aren't commercial.
Not commercial, right, and, and it's not outside, I mean, it turns up sometimes because-
So when you say they have a potluck dinner type, it's, you say everybody brings their own stuff?
No, they bring out friends to share.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean.
The food bank has an annual, get together with-
Funders.
Fund raising, you know, certain food.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, I mean, those are some of the language I think we can clean up a little bit of that, and maybe that. What about food truck rallies or things like that, no, no food truck rally events or anything?
What's a food truck rally?
You know, just a one day or one evening where you'll have, can food trucks come to town, and they have a-
I've never experienced that.
Really?
A story that is, is sort of getting its act together to have a food truck pie.
Oh, they have, yeah, there's quite, yeah, Portland has a ton of food trucks.
Oh, yeah.
But, but a rally is just, yeah, it's just one night, it's, they're huge back, you know, these things out.
The word is out, but we don't want.
Yeah, that's probably, but, you know, that's, you know, that was one of the suggestions when we talked about food trucks, that came out of the, you know, the feedback and the groups, was that there might be limitations, and that's why we kind of include them in this. So let's just say, one of the examples that came up was say, the distillery here, you know, lots of breweries have a food truck, and they don't want, they don't wanna do food, and they don't wanna be a food provider, so they will have rotating food trucks coming, one food truck a night, and so a different, you know, I think it leads to those as well, and, but that's a common practice throughout America for brewers, and so, and tasting brewers. But, you know, if this, if the facility wanted to do that, or if, say, the restaurant person that I spoke of at the beginning, if they wanted to do it for a limited time, we could do that through an events licensing, so that puts parameters, times, conditions, and certain things.
But that would be on a temporary basis?
Yes, exactly, and we would define temporary, so, but yeah, it's very, that's the beauty of an events, of doing a lot of this stuff that we're talking about, even if it's certain types of merchandising or something, you could do that through an events, and that puts the parameters on it with the condition, and often these events things have a mechanism, they either go before an administrative committee, which you'll see in most of the, I think, events that I sent you to, you know, where it's the planning director, or the fire, or the police, and all those, and we had that, I think, already, and you can see that, but this would formalize a new ordinance, and then the application would make it, you know, some, some things could just be administrative, and then others could even be conditioned to work too.
So this person that wants to have the, the truck, food truck, they own the property, they have a restaurant there?
Yeah.
So why are they wanting to, I mean, that's a big whole-
Because they're, they're not open though, during those hours, you know, they do, it's their day off, Monday, say, or something, and you're not using your property, why shouldn't you allow another one of your chefs who may want to start up his own business? That's what often food trucks and those types of things are, they're incubators. I've worked in many areas where, you know, great restaurants come from those guys and those trucks, you know, so. Anyhow, that's the kind of thing that I think in events, we can, we can kind of walk through and, you know, talk about that.
I'm, I'm curious to understand better what, is there any reason that you can't tell us who, what restaurants you're talking about?
Yeah, Bob, I can tell you, Bob, Bob Neroni, it's, I mean, it's, you can make an open records request, but I don't believe he would propose any saying that.
I would, I would, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, so there are, I think there's people that are out there that, you know, can see this as an opportunity, and it presents a different avenue, not saying they want it all over, all the time, and I think that's also an advantage of events things, is because they can show you guys as kind of a pilot test, and that's how often these things work, is, hey, you see that certain things are working the way you like, you can keep that, and you may wanna keep it as an event, but you may wanna broaden that scope of that in certain areas, if you see it's working and it's working well. So I think that's, that's another great thing about having these kind of, um, any, any other questions, or any concerns, or?
Well, one thought, and it may just be a general consideration, I'm just kind of looking through the lens of parks more generally, and the use of the parks, and the wake parks that are used throughout the year, just that the recreation there, that, that consideration to be made, that, you know, you certainly may have some permitted events that happen within a park, you know, could be more, that kind of a thing, and that, that the ongoing purpose of the parks is really more passive recreation, and people coming and going and enjoying the quiet space and green space of, of the parks, and so, that's, I think, just a, a consideration as we're thinking about bounds, and the busy season, and how many, what kinds of limits to put on the green spaces, which may be different than a parking lot space, and, and the primary use and the primary intention of the use, and it doesn't mean it would preclude having some of that, but I think it's a, it's a question of balance and purpose and intent, so, so that, so that they're open and available mostly for that kind of passive recreation.
How do people, I see a lot of soccer games in the park, do they have to get a permit to have soccer, do you do, or is that just a quick up game, and it's allowed to catch?
I think in some things, they're essential, they, they're played, I don't know whether they have, have to reserve, if they're a little-
No, they, it's first come, first served.
Yeah, and I think, and it's stated that the use of the parks is first, I think if it's an event, if 50 people or more, it has to have a permit, and have to fit up parameters, like a, or any sort of, I think that's a big one.
But sometimes, sometimes on Wednesday night, there's a lot more, they'll let it be complete, there's a lot of parks.
I've, I've got a couple of specific things, and people say, oh, you know, this isn't what this meeting is for. I noticed that it looks like the regulations don't allow somebody to put up an arbor for a, for a wedding, I'm curious whether that is something that we wanna continue to have as a discipline. If, if, if you're letting people have a wedding in a park?
In a park?
Yeah. Can you have a wedding in a, are you allowed to have a wedding in a park? If you don't let that to people, it seems like you could have wanted some, if somebody already there.
I think it's the idea again of structure, to bringing a structure, something able to regulate what the structures are, I don't know if there are liability issues in terms of if you come in and you put your own arbor up and it falls over, or the wind, I, you know, and what it does to the-
To the ground, to the ground.
Okay, that, that would be-
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that could turn into a theme thing for other events, too, people are allowed to start with wine, could, could go somewhere else.
Giant Smurfs, or something.
Yeah, on that, on that note, have you all considered, you know, approved, you know, that it's the same thing as cafes, you know, and a lot, I've worked in jurisdictions where they did not allow just any street furniture, or, you know, cafe tables and that thing, you had to choose from these three types.
Cheese table.
And, and that's it, and, and, so they pay for that, is what I'm saying, so-
That's just that you could bring up into the park?
No, I'm saying that's for the, that, that was for cafes, so cafes and street furniture, right? And then for, I've worked in communities where the wedding thing, they, there's two or three, like you said, arbors or whatever, that the part, the public works department or whoever does that, but they're paying for that, you know, they're, and so that's, they choose from a picture book of what they want, and so, you know, there are those things, you know?
And does the city receive that remit?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, that's, they're, they're money making machines, weddings. Oh, my goodness, same areas, I can't tell you how much money they may offer weddings a year, so.
The other, right, that, that wasn't a great, it's a, uh, under our most recent previous public works, I believe, we went through a, a cycle in which all of the park benches, our park tables were placed on- in which all of the park benches, park, our park tables were placed on concrete pads and bassed down to them. So you couldn't, as far as I can tell, there is no picnic table in this city in a park that you can move around. I understand that that makes it easier for them to mow the grass.
That was the main reason, was maintenance.
And the wind.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's.
Oh, wow, those, those circles have had to make it.
Wind is pretty powerful here sometimes.
Yeah, there, you know, there's lots of considerations when you go down any of these avenues, that's for sure. But, you know, I, I just asked a question because I didn't know if you guys could ask that. So any other kind of types of events or anything that I've, I've listed here that you guys want to talk about or throw into this that, you know, into the mix of what we kind of review or discuss?
I'm, I'm curious if any of the merchants downtown, if they actually want to display outside.
Yeah. Yeah.
I know it did when we started the farmer's market and.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I know we have complaints quite a bit or before I came, of merchants doing that all quite frequently. So one of the reasons that I think got the enforcement officials to follow from that, and I know we've done follow from two or three since she started. So it's, it's a common thing. Any place I've ever been, it is always a common thing. So.
So you're saying that merchants are, are doing things that are against the, the present rules and.
It's, you know, and, you know, whether it's a, yeah, you know, whether it's a sidewalk sign or a simple display or something like that, you know, often you'll get a new thing like a little banner or kite thing or, you know, I was in Georgia and one of those little balloon things started, you know, so it's always something, I can tell.
Sign ordinances or things?
Yes, sign, and signs kind of work with, work with that. So. But, yeah, merchandising is always an issue. And, you know, for instance, I have someone from the, one of the haystack nonprofit or something like that, they want to set up a table, okay? So they want to set up a table to sell. Where are they allowed to do that and all that? So, you know, you have these different things that don't fall neatly into the current practices. So one of the things I wanted to talk with while we have both groups here is, you know, the kind of the timing or the pace of this ordinance or how, how we want to go about the kind of the moving forward. You know, I knew it was impossible to call how long tonight's was going to go prior. So, you know, having a first work session to kind of at least talk about what I think the main issues will be and to kind of go through some of the main sections of the ordinance, that's really what I hope to accomplish tonight. Not to say I thought we would get through it all tonight. And so, you know, how we want to move as, as a joint group moving forward. You know, like I said, there's one certain section that will have to go through the planning commission and that's the outdoor merchandising section. The events where that's going to end up falling within the ordinance may not end up falling within the planning commissions, but you guys will at least give recommendations on how and where that should go. And so to have the parks involved in that, I think has helped in, especially since you're already working on language. So, you know, I defer to you guys to kind of say how you want to, how much do you want to do more tonight? If you want to do any more tonight? And if not, how, how soon would you like to get back together and talk about this? And do you want to do it in a few months?
I'd like to wrap it up.
Yeah.
But, but I, but I think if we, when we get back together, I think we need to spell out the ordinances that you have a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And so when we get back together, you know, would you like me to at least maybe even just give you kind of a rough draft to work from of maybe a possible ordinance? Or do you want to still maybe work through some of the things that you're certain issues?
We should make some kind of decision about what we think about these different events. For example, I mean, I, I just see right here, it jumps right out, it was fireworks.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it just jumps right out. Well, as far as I'm concerned, that should be on the table.
Do you all have?
And that's me.
Yeah, no, that is good. And do you all have a July Fourth fireworks special by any?
No, no, no.
And they're prohibited on the beach. Shouldn't it prohibit anyone around the, around that area? Yeah, though, though it doesn't prevent a lot of noise and.
But there were great ones when I first moved down there.
You know, I.
You go to seaside, it looks like, you know, there's desert coming up.
Yeah, yeah. And so that's the thing, you know, I, I've worked in plenty of communities that do it and it's like the Rotary Club will do it or the city will do it and some, but, you know, that's, it's up to you guys on how you want to move forward. And so, yeah, if you want to at the next one, I can draft up kind of like you guys suggested about some of the, at least the ordinance stuff that I think are the main points to look at in that. But then we can walk through this stuff, get the feel for that, and then I would think that at the next one I could probably pretty much have, have us maybe some to draft it and.
What do you see as the biggest issue right now in terms of the ordinances that affect?
I think it's more just getting an ordinance for that's paid, okay? And then what is going to go under that? I think there are certain sections of the outdoor merchandising that could be handled by events, like I said, maybe, maybe it's food trucks or something like that. But how that's going to affect some of these other ordinances, well, we've got them in two or three different places. You know, if we just got it in the events ordinance and then we can put parameters on time and limits on how that they operate. You know, I think that that's the key. I don't think if this is, this will be our first kind of events ordinance, we don't have to get everything solved in the first.
And would part of that be also speaking to the types of events that may be in different kinds of areas? So there are restrictions in parks versus some events might be appropriate to parks, some not.
You bet. And even if it's specific parks, you know, that I'm not even, that's what I'm thinking. You know, I, I think that the problem I have, or I should say that my communities have, often I think they see things, when you say something like food trucks, they see it like Portland or someplace where it's everywhere, it's going to be, you know. No, you know, I think that being in a small community, especially one that, you know, is aesthetic, you know, or important, you know, we want to keep what we've got. And so we, we can try little things out and that's why even just even this matrix, parks, street, private, you know, start thinking where you and how you want to see these things if you want to see them. And so if I list one, it doesn't mean I want them, other can be as large. But, no, that, those are just ideas that I've seen and these happen and I've heard people complain, well, they do it in, you know, outdoor merchandising or whatever. So.
Maybe in other towns or some other places?
Yeah, either events or, yeah, you know, don't they do that? Don't they sell this?
You mean, so in Canada?
Yeah, yeah, so anyhow.
So I think it would be good for you to, if you could take a first shot at the draft.
Yeah.
And if we have the articles there and your suggestions and we'll see if things are missing.
Yeah. Well, it would give you some to weigh this stuff as you walk through it against, and we can cancel it out, you know, if it, this is not. You know, I can tell you, well, this is written with this there or, you know, and we can go through that section and we can maybe also help you change it and bring it back to draft. All right. And what about timing? Is it like, would you all be able, the parks committee, to do the next work session at the next month's planning commission?
Why don't we wait until we're past?
What was that?
Past Paul D. S.
And then can we take rounds right after that?
They're really busy.
Oh, okay.
Just been in a, so what date would that be? And that would be in April?
Yeah, it's the fourth Thursday of every month is when we go.
Fourth Thursday. We'll be through the twelve days right now.
So would you like to do it this next month? So say, what is that, May, May's meeting? Come back in May? May twenty-third. It's not like the planning commission doesn't have things to do. I really, if you, planning commission did great tonight, I'm going to, I just wanted to touch you on that.
I didn't even need to use my whistle.
I think you need a big handle.
No, no, I'm just giving you. We know it's going to be hot.
And so I will, if that works for you guys, then let's plan on doing the next joint session in May. I will try to get you guys materials for that, say, two weeks or so prior at least, so that you'll have some time to ask me questions prior if you need or, or feedback. I, I love the, I love people asking me things or calling me or sending me things. I did say that about, was going to get later on about the different land use things that we're going through the legislature. There's really just three kind of main things that I wanted to update us on. And parks, it's going to take me two seconds here. So H. House Bill two, two thousand and one would be, and both of these house bills, two thousand and one and two thousand and three, are targeted for larger cities, so ten thousand above what these would affect, okay? But that doesn't mean they may be amended or changed. And they also at least set a precedent or, you know, they, they would set that precedent of this is what we're meaning or that at least that's what we're hearing. And those are kind of the two main land use things that we're seeing are really, you know, when I spoke earlier to Clay about, you know, I don't really see the other one as passing, kind of say, well, I don't know, you know. But these two are getting a lot of press and a lot of attention, a lot of talk, and I think that they may pass. And so one of them is the one where all R one districts in the metro area and cities ten or fifteen thousand, wherever it stands now or above would allow up to quadplexes in any R one district. So not just duplexes or triplexes, but up to quads within any R one zone.
And they would, they would impose that on all?
Yeah.
About ten, more than ten or fifteen thousand?
Oh, right now, yeah, any ten or fifteen thousand right now. And so that is, Minneapolis is the first city to do that. And so it, it is something that's happening nationally because of the housing crises, national, and they're trying different measures. The American Planning Association, a working group that I work on the legislative team with, we are recommending amendments to that because we think it's too broad, that there's other ways to go about this. It kind of goes against a little bit of what land, local land use does. And so, so this, the other one, HB two thousand and three is the kind of co one that goes with it, which makes anyone, every jurisdiction, I think it's ten thousand as well, but they, you have to at least update your voteable lands inventory and housing inventory every eight years. And if you don't, they're choosing ten cities every year where you have to come into compliance with certain things. So they're getting serious about housing, at least is what we're hearing.
I think we're doing that at least, that on November.
I think so.
I think so.
I, I don't think, I don't think, we're doing the bill of the lands and I don't think we've actually updated ours in a little bit now, but, but they're doing actual also housing inquiries with that too. So film one or the, you know, average trust. And we did a Platte County housing study, which I'm going to bring before you guys, possibly the next meeting. So anyhow, those are the two and then the one that you brought before, which is Senate Bill. Yeah, I'll send out these, the plans and all that.
That one would takes away any.
Which would take away all and.
Take away all short term rounds or take long regulations?
All regulations.
Long regulations. But I thought, I thought that died.
I just checked it today and it looked like to me that it was, it didn't look like it was dead on.
No, it didn't.
Yeah, I think it's, it's still sitting.
It didn't kill it, but it's just turned off.
Yeah, and the, I researched the guy that brought it forward and he is from some small community.
Airbnb.
Yeah. Now, I, I made a little, to the, because the Oregonian ran an editorial on, you know.
That was the biggest thing.
Yeah, and so I, I, I replied to him, well, it's funny how someone has no short term rule. And I even did a picture of if you put into VRBO a search for that town, it's like a hundred miles away before you can find one. We had three, you know, we had three hundred or five hundred, you know, whichever one you want to go to. And so anyhow, I didn't think he had so much state of mind. So those are things that will impact, I think, us and I just want to kind of keep us aware of that, at least the planning commission aware of that. And, but I appreciate the parks group coming out tonight and, and if, I don't know what the planning commission, if you guys want to move the priorities and stuff to the next, we'll do the work sessions. Since we don't have that, we'll have.
No, we need to really look at, I think we need to look at it. But the only thing I want to wrap up is our schedule for the year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Derek, do you want us to go back to the?
Well, I, you can stay. I just want to wrap it up. But what I wanted to, you know, what I wanted to bring forward to you folks is the Thanksgiving, November and the December meeting.
I wrote that down too, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, November twenty-eighth were scheduled, which is.
Yeah, it's Thanksgiving.
Which is Thanksgiving.
So in the past, we normally have moved that to either Monday or Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving. So I didn't know if there was any consensus on that.
Well, Tuesdays were our last.
What's that?
Tuesdays were our last, we had to do it last year.
Okay, and then, and then in December, our, our regular meeting is one day after Christmas?
Yeah.
And so do you want to stick to that here?
No. So what about the Tuesday before that as well, which is what we did this year too?
I thought we, I thought we held it on the day after.
We did, we did. It was, it was two days after, I think, we did two days after.
Day after is tough for a lot of people.
Yes, I agree.
What the, what are you saying?
The day after Christmas is a tough one.
So do you want to do both the December one and January one on Tuesdays prior to the holiday?
The holiday is Wednesday.
Oh, Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve.
Right. But, yeah, if you say we do that.
I would say that this staff highly likely will not be in any one that entire week. Not to say that Bill or another one of their firm can't be there, but, you know, I've worked on many commissions and they just canceled December and, you know, or they move it an entire week somewhere. But I, I, I can't work that because, you know, I, I usually have to travel back these four weeks.
Right. A lot of people travel, I think, I agree.
And, you know, I, I would not, I mean, I don't know your all's traditions or whatever, but I can tell you in most areas that I work, that a lot of planning commissions canceled their December meetings. They just don't have that turnout. But I don't know, I don't know what you guys do.
Well, I say we either cancel it or put it away. Well, I say we either cancel it or put it a week early. How do you do it, like, do you cancel?
DRB is the week before.
I don't do the left.
But DRB is the Thursday before.
Yeah, DRB is the Thursday prior. So it could be the Tuesday prior or whatever.
Tuesday prior or, or not?
Um, Tuesday prior would be, I think, better.
The seventeenth?
Do, do you have a date on that?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Okay, seventeenth in January and...
No, December.
Yeah, I mean, December.
What's the date for November, please?
Twenty-fourth, is that right?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? Okay. Okay, is there anything else, uh, go to the order?
Uh, no, I can do the rest at next, next month.
Okay, all right, then we're done.
All right, thank you all.
So this priority list is what you want us to look at?
Yeah, please look at that. Also, like I said, if you want to, uh, look around the country or look at other areas, that also always, I think, helps. But look at that. For different things, but, you know, like for statistics and, uh, I haven't looked at them for this, but I'll be happy to look into it.
Work for, I'm curious about this.
Yeah, yeah, that's in, that's in, that's in the data.
No, their policy?
Yeah. Yeah, and, uh, you know, so I'll look at theirs, and I compare to all the ones on the coast, and I'm going to have updated on that for the council as well, so...
And is it our choice to meet the council if we want to?
Oh, yeah, 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 in fact, the, uh...
It's our choice, they're not...
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, these are...